Good evening, everyone. The time is six oh seven. We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you all for your attendance at this evening's meeting. Thank you for your patience. We've had some technical difficulties today, but we are working through them and I want to thank the staff for their assistance and dedication to this effort. Would we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, what my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to come upon us and to guide us, to do your will for this community. Through your Holy Spirit, enlighten every one of us to do what's best for this town and bring us peace, bring us patience, and bring us understanding in your heavenly name.
Amen.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for your attendance at this evening's meeting. Just as a reminder, tonight's meeting is not a meeting regarding North Central Solid Waste Authority. This meeting being held this evening is regarding solid waste management and trash pickup for the city of Espanola. And I'm wanting to remind all members of the governing body that your comments this evening are being recorded and I caution you from making any defamatory statements or allegations that could put the city into serious potential litigation. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro-Town Peggy Sue Martinez. Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar. Counselor Justin Salazar Torres.
He's out. He just got out of the hospital, so he won't be in tonight.
Manuel J. Martinez. Denise D. Benavides. Dorothy Dee De Valdez. Erin J. Salazar. And Nanette D. Rodriguez.
Excused.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Members of the governing body, you have the agenda for you this evening. There is some confusion. Public comment is allowed this evening, but because it's an emergency meeting, we can't have public comment, general public comment. Public comment has to be limited specifically to the item on the agenda which we are going to allow and under Item A of the discussion items. So, public comment will be opened in and then I'll allow the council to conduct discussion first off, but that's for any concerns about the way the agenda is set up, but that's the way it is with legal counsel. Uh, Mayor Pro-Town.
Thank you. So, the public comment concerning the issues with the trash situation within the city confines will be held under Item A?
Yes.
Move to approve as such.
Motion made by Mayor Pro-Town Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar. Any discussion? Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro-Town Peggy Sue Martinez. Counselors Den- Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Justin Salazar Torres. Sorry, I need to not call him. Manuel J. Martinez.
For the motion.
Denise D. Benavides.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For those that didn't get a chance to, there's the ability to sign up for public comment before we go in. We'll be discussing rules of public comment, but going into agenda items, we have items proposed for council consideration, discussion items, action items, discussion and possible action regarding North Central Solid Waste Authority collection services and complaints pursuant to Memorandum of Understanding dated August eighth, twenty seventeen, and the Joint Powers Agreement dated November twenty seventh, two thousand and two. Ms. LaRue, we have people obviously signed up for public comment. Okay. I'm going to announce and recognize tonight the rules for debate, uh, public comment this evening. Uh, thank you all for joining. We're thankful that you signed up for public comment at this evening, evening's meeting. We have established procedures for this meeting. Public comment is limited to no more than two minutes and while we're welcoming everyone's participation this evening, city residents should receive preference. Please understand while this is a regional issue, the city of Espanola is committed to resolving the situation for the citizens within the city limits first and foremost. And the city clerk has a contact number for Rio Riba County that you can utilize to contact the respective county commissioners. With none being said, other than that, Ms. LaRue, would you please indicate who's, who's signed up for public comment?
Cynthia Luntini.
Thank you.
You have a two-minute limit.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Luntini. I live on South Coronado Avenue. And my concern is, obviously, the status of our city. All of the trash that's coming out out there, it's really causing a hazard. We're having people whose trash isn't picked up, who's, who are going to the large bins at our businesses and leaving trash around there. It's become a real nuisance, to say the least, and in some cases, a hazard. Um, what I would like to know is, has the city issued a letter to North Central with the ninety-day demand to cure? If not, why not? Because this isn't the first time that North Central has caused these kinds of issues. Number two, and while we aren't here to specifically discuss North Central, I think that this bears a lot to do with what we're going through here. If we can't get a phone call as a customer, why would we continue with that service? We're, we're the customer. And North Central does not answer calls, does not return emails. How long should that go on before the city decides that we need to do something about it? How long does that go on before we move on to someone else? I would like to see a copy of the ninety-day period letter to cure or quit with North Central because I think that this is out of control. It seems like there's a little trash monopoly here in Rio Riba County that needs to end. And what I would also like to walk away with at this meeting are some actual dates and names. So, I would like to know who the city is actually considering to replace North Central or to step in to assist with the current issue? When we can expect that to actually happen? If you could give us some dates or at least a follow-up date and let us know on this day you can follow up with your city council and we will give you some information that we don't have tonight. But more importantly, what I, the question that I want answered is, if we have not given them a ninety-day notice, why haven't we done it?
Time.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue?
Antonio Tovargas.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for your time. I'm not a resident of the city of Espanola, although most of my brothers and sisters are. I've been involved in trying to deal with a situation with North Central Solid Waste Authority. So, I'm going to keep my comments really brief. I'm just going to say, number one, the Joint Powers Agreement is a fraud on the people of Rio Riba County and the city of Espanola and the citizens of the city of Espanola. The two thousand and two and the two thousand and sixteen Joint Powers Agreement has been rejected by the Mexico Fireman's Authority. What Rio Riba County and North Central have done since its inception is push it as a political subdivision of the state. It does not qualify as a political just, uh, uh, political subdivision of the state. Now, there's several reasons for that. The county has not been giving me a reason for that. Uh, but I suspect that it could never be a political subdivision of the state because it consists of two sovereign nations. And if anybody thinks that Okeo Windi or Sandatira are going to give up their sovereignty to become a political subdivision of the state, I have some beachfront property in the Sahara Desert down south. Now, the other thing is that the Memorandum of Understanding and the Joint Powers Agreement have not been honored by, by North Central from the very, very beginning. And so, I only want to make one more comment. I have across the Rio Riba County Commission twice last year and I had, I had given them a lot of information that they could work with. Till today, there has been no leadership there. The reason I come for, for, uh, before you folks is I hope that the city of Espanola governing body has the courage,
Time.
Has the courage to do what the county that refuses to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. LaRue?
Mesa Ymes Valencia. Good evening. My name is Alice Valencia and I reside at four nineteen Lamb Street, which is within the city limits. However, it is a private, uh, street, as I understand, from a, from a, a city meeting that we had some while back. I think we all share the same concerns. You know, I kind of go back to what the first presenter said. There's just so much trash going on right now. We don't, I didn't receive a letter to state that or any type of notification that we had to pull our, our trash bins to the highway, to the closest, uh, main road. And if you go down seventy-six, you can see the congestion of trash guns already. It's been a problem even when they pick up the trash with the big trucks on this main highway. It's going to get worse. Now, as you can see, I'm an elderly person. I have a disabled husband. And you can just imagine what we would try to do taking our trash from our home all the way to the city, to the main highway. So, again, I think this has been an ongoing problem. I've seen a lot of problems with North Central as well. I think you need to get to the root cause of it. You know, get down to the root cause of why this is happening. It's not the first time, it's not the second time, it's happened times before. Okay? I'd like to know who our representative of the city of Espanola is on the board of North Central Solid Waste Authority. Peggy?
I, I got appointed.
Not supposed to engage with the public right now.
Okay. That's fine. Again, because we need representation there and hopefully they can, um, bring back some information for us, the constituents of the city as well. Okay? Uh, uh, again, I think we all share the same, the same feeling about it. There's just no way what they're expecting us to do as far as moving our trash, taking our trash to the transfer station. We try getting out there on Saturdays and you see what it's, what it's like. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. LaRue?
Sally Matthews.
Yes, gentlemen, thank you. Um, I live on the west side of town and I do share the concerns as my fellow, um, residents of the Espanola Valley. I do have a safety concern about having all the barrels or all our bins on public highways. I do believe it'll eventually cause some safety hazards and concerns. And I also worry about an excess of trash being left and, and making our city not beautiful. I mean, just having the trash thrown because I have a feeling it discontinues. It may eventually get to that and I hope it won't, but I do have concerns with that. And I don't really have anything else to say. It hasn't already been very eloquently said, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sally.
Manuel Salazar.
Good evening, councilmen, women, guests. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I will take advantage of the, the two minutes and address, since you can't engage, maybe some suggestions as far as, uh... They suggested about, like she mentioned, the ladies for me. It's not a good idea to be hauling or having citizens of the city have to haul their own dumpsters to the road. What kind of liabilities does the city opening themselves up to? Should elders get, elderly citizens get hurt, so on and so forth? You know the drill. It's, has no common sense. None of the suggestions that they propose have any common sense. That's one. Who in the city is the contact that interacts with Rio Riba County, uh, directors or whomever is tasked with overseeing this Joint Powers Agreement with the Solid Waste Company? It's obvious and undermentioned, it's obviously a monopoly that's taking place. They never have their trucks up and running. They skip days. It, it's just intolerable service that the people are being subjected to. What kind of language has been placed in this Joint Powers Agreement and contracts for these providers of the service? Are we going to start providing backup service through city personnel to assist them in their time of failure? And who's dying? Who's going to pick up the tab there? Or is there language in this contract where you can put updated damages on them, so on and so forth? When entering these agreements, number one, you gotta put some teeth in your contract. Two, you gotta have the tenacity and the guts to implement them and impose them on these contractors and keep them toeing the line. Otherwise, what are you left with for being subjected to danger?
Time.
For service?
Thank you. Ms. LaRue?
Eva Betta.
May I, do we know if, if the person addressing the council is a city resident or not?
Yes. From here on out, we like everyone, I know for the most part, I've been indicating their physical address and if they're a city resident, please indicate that.
Hello, uh, my name is Eva Betta. I am a city resident. I live on Nineteen Fifty East Shadow Lane. I witnessed, uh, a couple months ago when the solid waste company did not have a big truck to pick up the commercial, um, bins. It was a big mess. Bins were filled too over the top and it was visible from where I live. Didn't like it. Not only that, but the trash was overflowing onto the street and flooding in the neighborhood with trash. That's unacceptable to the residents of this city. I've, I've called numerous times to the solid waste company, did not get no answers. Like Mr. Salazar said, there should be a contract that is, um, a contract administrator that's overseeing this contract or this joint agreement. And if they're not following the terms of their contract, there should be some teeth in there to terminate that contract. And you guys should have more than one person bidding on a contract. You cannot give somebody a contract solely separate. It has to be, um, competitive. I don't think that's happening. And if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but I don't see it happening. Um, our city is trashed enough with the homeless. We're, we're, we're becoming a city of trash. And if our residents' household trash is a problem, imagine what our city's going to look like here in the near future. It already does look like that. And it's not because of the trash, it's because of the people that just throw trash. But the residents have a, um, you guys owe the city something to the residents. You owe it to us.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue?
Alfred Cereva.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, residents of the city of Espanola and surrounding area. I'm going to take a slightly different, uh, attitude towards solid waste authority. And that is the fact that, uh, when it was initially established, I thought it would, and I still think today, that it was great for all these various entities to come together in such a poor area, pull all the resources together, work together for a common cause. Now, granted, I have to agree with everything that's been said about trash here, trash there, no trucks and on, on down the line. But in, in today's discussion or future discussions, I think it'll center around solutions to how we can better improve solid waste and the solid waste authority. Let me give you one quick example. The, um, uh, there is a tax that the city of Espanola and the Rio Riba County collect. It's the Environmental Grossness Tax that was implemented in nineteen ninety-three. And we've been collecting that, uh, tax for, for that period of time. In my opinion, that money should be going to the solid waste authority because if you really peel back the layers of the onion, really what you're dealing with is the fact that the solid waste authority doesn't have enough money to either hire staff or get equipment and they've always been limping along since I can, I can remember. But there are solutions if we put our heads to it. Uh, and I think also that, I don't think anybody wants to raise rates enormously, like double the rates or anything of that sort. So, I think that there are solutions, uh, if we put our heads together. And I would be one that would volunteer my time to do, uh, such, uh, such an endeavor. And I think it's very durable. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand average was being collected at one time. The, the county was collecting two hundred and seventy-five thousand, the city was collecting two hundred and seventy-five thousand in environmental grossness tax. My question is, where did that money go?
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yezzy. Ms. LaRue?
Teresa Montoya.
Please state their names, sir.
It's Mike Montoya, Navocia. I think some of the answer, it is, uh, answered for me, but I have a, do we have federal funding on this? State funding? County funding? How many customers do we have that are paying two hundred and eighty dollars a year? Another thing is, maybe do we need an audit? And another thing to people like in Cordoba and other places where, um, you just have one main, one little main road and you have a lot of different streets and you have a lot of elderly people. They gotta care, there's their trash. No, a lot of them can't. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue?
No one else to side the personal comment.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention I'm in the city of Espanola.
Former city councilor, Alfred.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Um, you know, I'm going to, before I turn it over to Mr. Yezzy, we first became aware of this situation on Friday afternoon. Um, city staff quickly mobilized Friday during the weekend. It was very hard because of Labor Day holiday. Um, reviewing options and seeing situations of what we could do to support our citizens in the city. Um, city staff was mobilized immediately on Tuesday. Uh, to specifically, I, our concern was handicap, the elderly, the homebound throughout our community that would be neglected from trash service in that situation. Uh, so Mr. Yezzy authorized, we have Streets Department and Water Department out rolling, um, your dumpster either to the main roadway that North Central is indicating or taking it solely to the transfer station in Rio Riba County. Um, we've valued a lot of your issues and concerns and we're taking them extremely seriously. And we're welcoming your input this evening. We're grateful that we had such a great turnout of individuals this evening to discuss the serious situation in our community. And with no further ado, Mr. Yezzy, I'm going to let you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, essentially, the Item A that we're looking for is talking to the city attorney. We need y'all to vote to approve filing a formal complaint on the JPA board, which is North Central Solid Waste. At that point in time, we will call for an emergency meeting of that board where we will voice all of our citizens' complaints, our concerns, and try to get a resolution to this very quickly.
Mayor Pro-Town?
I want to make sure that people understand that within the city of Espanola, the, the city management and the governing body have all agreed that it's very important that we don't have, uh, people rolling their bin to a main. We, we believe that it's very important for us to maintain the household pickups and that's what the staff has been able to do so far. We realize that not everybody has had theirs picked up. We have tried to audit street by street, house by house, as to who is still lacking those pickups and we're trying to make sure that those streets get a pickup by tomorrow and then continuance onto next week until this problem is resolved. In the meantime, we do not expect any senior citizens in this community or anybody else that cannot roll their bin up to roll it to any main. It, we will, we will handle it. Uh, the staff, I give streets and, uh, uh, parks and who else is helping? Water, uh, complete. Thank you for stepping up to doing what they need to do. I thank you, Mr. Yezzy, for your vision and for your ability to delegate this situation. And Mayor, I thank you also for your commitment to making sure that we keep Espanola as clean and safe as possible with, with providing this service even though it's not happening from the entity that's supposed to handle this. So, the committee, the community, the city, the governing body, the management, are all in agreement with everything that has been said here. We agree with you and we want to solve this issue. That's the reason that they called for this meeting. That's the reason that we're having this discussion. This is an issue that we all agree needs to be solved.
Mr. Rennick? Did you have any comments for this evening? I know that we had to get the authorization from the council. I think we've...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I did not understand what you're saying.
Authorization? The authorization for that notification letter.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and notify, uh, North Central formally to, uh, convene, uh, meeting, special meeting for a discussion concerning the service and the Joint Powers Agreement.
Motion made by Mayor Pro-Town Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Counselor Denise Benavides. Any discussion? Counselor Manuel Martinez?
Um, my, my discussion on this is, uh, between now and that point that we actually get this meeting, what are we going to continue to do as far as trash pickup? I think even if it means contracting with, uh, some citizens that are willing to pick up trash and have pickups or dumps that might be able to go up and down the neighborhoods and pick up that trash and take it to North Central, if it means contracting with them and the city having to pay that, I think that's something we need to look at before it gets too far because, um, this emergency meeting could happen tomorrow or it could happen next week or God knows when, when it gets situated. So, I think we need to act on that right now. Yes, Councilman, um, we are actually doing that. We're looking at hiring interns. Um, this will actually be paid for out of the money that's normally paid to North Central Solid Waste. They are providing services, they will not be paid for that. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rennick?
Mayor, I'm not certain I understand the motion. I think it was to have a special meeting.
No, no, the motion on the floor is to send them the official notice that we talked about this week. Requesting a special meeting with the formal complaint against the JPA and convening a board of the JPA, the Joint Powers of the sovereign nations of Okeo Ingas, Hala Clara, and Rio Riba County, the city of Espanola.
Okay. What I should point out then is that while the notice... What I should point out then is that while the notice presumably would address the deficiencies in service that we've heard tonight, the resolution to that is not immediately obvious, and there are numerous considerations here.
So I believe Mister Yatzi has been talking about that. And the temp situation, what we're planning is hiring the temporary employees.
That is correct. The temporary employees, that we're not gonna make our citizens roll their cans to the major streets. We will run trucks through there to take care of it.
Mayor Protem, Peggy C. Martinez.
I just want, uh, the public to know that there's a commitment from, from the city that we will continue trash service, even if our staff or the council themselves has to pick up trash. It will continue within the city limits. Down the streets, on the mains, North Central will still continue the mains. But beyond the mains, on every side street, we are committed to making sure it gets picked up. And they've done a tremendous job so far, and we're hopeful that that will continue. Before, before there's any temp hire, correct? Thank you.
And before I turn it over, Counselor, um, we understand the plight of the citizens in the county. We truly do. But our first and foremost commitment is to the citizens of the city of Espaniola, the desire in the city limits. We are spending our resources so we can support our constituency. As stated earlier, if you came in late, we urge you to please contact your county commissioners about your situation in the county. We are doing our aspect here for the city of Espaniola. Uh, we understand the handicap, we understand the disabled, but the city of Espanola cannot service the county. Counselor Manny Martinez.
Mister, uh, as far as pickup for businesses, is that, uh, it's been disrupted at all? Or is this just mainly residential?
You know, as...
Monday for, Mayor Protem, cuz she...
Ms. Eva Beta discussed that at one point, it was a truck issue that was broken. They had a side load, uh, truck issue that became a big problem because it, it's an antiquated truck that is very difficult to get parts for, and during COVID, it was near impossible. So what landed on happening is that North Central moved in front-loading truck, front-loading bins to the businesses that had these side-loading, uh, bins already full. What happened, though, was there was not an availability to pick up those bins since there was no truck. So there is where the trash got spewed all over the place. So, uh, they directly collect from the business community. Between them and the business, that's their situation. We don't have a say on that. Our concern as a community deals with the residential pickup. Uh, they, every business pays North Central at North Central. They don't come through the community to do that. Uh, so far, from what my understanding is, they purchased two new trucks, and they have been able to pick up the front loaders, and they've been emptying the side loaders by hand. So it's something that has improved, but that doesn't mean that it's improved for the residential side. So that's where we're at right now.
Mister Rennick.
Mayor, I think that the, the, the plan outlined by the manager is, is good and should address some of the concerns. To the extent of requiring additional revenues in order to pay for it, uh, to caution against withholding payment to the authority, as the authority would likely consider that to be a breach of the agreement, even though the authority itself may be in breach by not delivering the service. That is something that would be addressed in the meeting of the JPA Board. I would point out that one of the, one of the gentlemen from the audience mentioned that the environmental grocery seats tax should be going to the authority. The EGRT is not dedicated either to the authority or to the county. By agreement, the county pays a certain amount, I mean, the city pays a certain amount every year to the county for the transfer station. But it's not, the tax is not dedicated to that purpose. Uh, I have no idea how much revenue that tax generates. It's paid one hundred thousand dollars a year to the county. If it's more than that, then presumably that could be used for the purposes that the council administration are talking about. Um, that is a source of revenue that is available, that is not dedicated, although a hundred thousand is contractually obligated.
Mister Yatzi.
Um, when it comes to not paying them, we're gonna pay them for the accounts they do service. We have a list of roads that they're refusing to service, that they cannot service. They gave us a five-page list the other day. We finally got it on Wednesday. And so those roads, if they're not providing services, I don't see how the city would need to pay them for the service. The city's providing the service. But that is like something like you said, we can talk when we have an emergency meeting with the JPA.
Yes.
Mister Rennick, the way that it normally works is, uh, North Central picks up the residential accounts. They count the accounts that they pick up, and they bill the city according to how many accounts were picked up at a specific amount. And then the city, in return, remits that full amount to North Central every single month. So I'm presuming that by the city picking up what we're picking up, those accounts will not be included on the bill that's going to come to the city of Espanola. I'm hopeful that it's a legitimate bill that only counts the bins that North Central actually picked, so that the city is also taking account, am I correct? The city's also taking account of what they're picking up, so that we understand what was done by them and what was done by our staff. So I think at the end of the day, when he's talking about not remitting money to them, it's not money that they'll bill us for, it's money that, that will be cost savings because they didn't pick up certain bits. That's what I, my understanding is.
I understand, and that does make sense, but that's not the way that the agreement is worded. The agreement is worded where the rates charged to the customers should equal the amounts that are billed by the authority. It's not structured in a way that depends on the services delivered by the authority.
Thank you, Mister Rennick, for that clarification. Definitely bring that up in the meeting.
Mister Rennick, since we're still on this point, I think it was MOU or the JPA was specific for the city of Espanola regarding curbside or alley service, which would then be the breach of contract in that aspect. So, so I'm kinda confused where you're saying that the JPA is contradictory regarding the payment of service for Rennick?
I'm sorry, if I said the JPA, I meant the MOU. The JPA does not address this. The MOU does exactly what you said. It requires curbside pickup for each residence. And yes, it would appear that the authority is in breach of that by its ability to deliver. But that does not mean that the city can unilaterally withhold payment. The authority would likely deliver notice to the city that it's a breach for not delivering the payment. That's why the meeting with the JPA would be so important.
Counselor Manny Martinez.
Basically, what you're saying is the authority's still gonna charge the city for full service, even though they are not doing that, their, their job.
Counselor, I don't know if they will or not.
But they're able to.
But they would.
They could.
Counselor Denise Tintas.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor Protem, I'm just curious, when are your monthly meetings for the North Central Solid Waste Authority?
Uh, I was assigned to North Central when the administration changed under the new leadership of Mayor John Ramon V. Hill. We've had, uh, three meetings since then. Uh, one of them budgetary, one of them, uh, monthly, and one of them monthly. So they're usually held on the last, uh, week of the month. So we're not scheduled for another meeting until the end of October. But given this situation, uh, I need direction from this governing body to, to affect what's happening there. I will never make a decision, I want you to know that, for this community on my own. I will always bring back whatever is happening there, so that this body can vote on that and then take it back. So by doing this situation here, it allows us to have a formal letter drawn up to the authority so that we can enter into a dialogue about what is happening and how we can solve it. So, uh, once the letter gets sent, then I will send an email as a board member to North Central requesting an emergency meeting. They are quasi-governmental, so they also are held open to the Open Meetings Act, which means that emergency meeting, twenty-four-hour notice, special meeting, seventy-two-hour notice. I feel like this is emergency, I think we could get away with that under the law. So I'm hopeful that they will schedule that meeting as soon as possible. I'm fearful that the building itself that holds North Central will not be sufficient to have a meeting there. So I'm going to ask that we, uh, utilize one of our city buildings, maybe Convento or something, so that all of this public and other, other public that is gonna come from Rio de Janeiro and other areas has an opportunity to speak and, and voice their concern to what is happening, not only here, but throughout the community. But our concern right now is our residential accounts. Okay? So twenty-four hours, uh, Counselor Salusa.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Counselor Benavides, and then we'll go back to Counselor Martinez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, so much. I just wanna thank everybody that's here today, because without the participation of our community members, uh, this governing body, uh, can't perform. As Mayor said, when we were notified, he immediately, and our city manager and the governing body jumped into action. And we were notified pretty much like he said, I think it was really late on Friday afternoon.
Three o'clock, uh, three o'clock on Friday afternoon.
Very late, but, but...
And I found out from a county commissioner who sent it to me via text. I want everyone in this room to know and understand, that is the situation going on.
Yeah, and I actually got a, a phone call from my next commissioner, and then the letter was forwarded to me as well. So that's how we found out. And, and like I said, I want everyone to know that, you know, the action was taken immediately by our mayor, and, uh, notification to this governing body, and our city manager jumped into action. And, and I think that if we work together, uh, I wanna thank, uh, um, Mister Eda for talking about solutions, because, uh, when we work together, we can solve anything. Uh, I, I'm not for negativity, and I'm not for bad-mouthing my community. It's a beautiful community. I love where I live, I wouldn't live anywhere else. Let's work together to resolve issues. I encourage anybody in my district to contact me. I'm, I'm here to work together with you to resolve whatever issues are, are in our district. We have gone down that path. This governing body, I can tell you, is committed, and we are working on many, many solutions that you are all currently concerned about today. Uh, we have task forces in place that Mayor has identified to target the homeless, to target economic development, to target housing, to target several things. We have half-day of many accomplishments today. And, and I, I'm hopeful that we will continue down that path, because this governing body and this mayor are committed to this community. And I just want everyone to know that, because I'm so proud of the work that's happening. And I know sometimes we don't do the best job of letting our community know what we're doing, what we're targeting, what we're working on. And, and that's our fault, and, and believe me, those are improvements that we are all working towards. Everybody on this governing body is, is working towards making sure that there's notification, uh, to our constituents. Uh, we wanna ensure that our, our seniors and our veterans are safe. Uh, we wanna ensure that there's housing for everyone. We wanna ensure that those that have mental and substance abuse issues at some point are targeted and assisted. There's many, many issues in our community that we need to target, but I firmly believe the only way that we can do it is by working together with each other, with our nonprofits, and with other entities. So let's please do that, let's stay positive, and let's work together.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Martinez.
Thank you. Uh, well said, Counselor, the solution is the answer. But part of the solution is to find out where the break is and what happened. Uh, cuz you can't fix it if you don't find that break and see what's going on. Um, I'd like to know that, you know, in the meetings that you had, Counselor Martinez, uh, Mayor Protem, was there ever any indication that this was coming down the line? Or a thought about it? Uh, who made the decision to decide, uh, where and who, what areas were going to be cut from service? Uh, you know, and we need to find out what the bottom line is of who, who's making some bad decisions that's put us in the position that we are in today so that we can fix those. Cuz if we don't, uh, you know, there's a saying, if you don't find where the leak is, that water's still gonna keep flowing. And that's what we gotta do, is find out what's going on. Uh, it may be, as, uh, Mister Eda stated, it could be, uh, uh, I don't wanna say simple issue, but it could be as simple as they don't have enough funding. Or is the funding spread, uh, being spent elsewhere where it shouldn't be? And because when you do have a company that relies on vehicles to maintain their business, and they don't have a maintenance plan to keep those vehicles afloat every day, there's a problem there, cuz that's your main source of business. And I, I mean, I have to agree with a lot of these people here. If, uh, and I'm not trying to badmouth any North Central, but, uh, our, our prime concern is the citizens of Espanola, period. And if that means, uh, looking at other entities to, to fulfill that, that, that service, then that's what we need to do, uh, because that's the prime concern, honestly. Thank you.
Let's clarify, there's a motion on the floor right now. For a motion to send official notice to North Central Solid Waste made by Mayor Protem Peces Martinez, second by Counselor Denise Benavides, regarding taking action regarding North Central Solid Waste. Our next agenda item is regarding the future of solid waste collection within the city of Espanola. So let's limit our conversation topics and stick to our agenda points. Mayor Protem.
Uh, I'll go ahead and call for the question, and then we can discuss solutions as, unless you, you want me to, uh, fill you in a little bit?
I, I think it's in due, as the representative for North Central Solid Waste, I believe you should, uh, Mayor Protem.
So I, I got on that board, uh, picking, picking their book apart, the MOU, the joint power agreement, the budget. I received a book about this bid. I studied that thing backward and forward. And, uh, a- as we got ready for the budgetary meeting, we knew, I knew as a board member that there were many trucks that were broken, and many trucks that needed to be replaced. And yet, the line item for replacement of those trucks was not enough in my mind to suffice what needed to happen. So we went round and round with that situation. The issue is that the city of Espanola pays the bill in its entirety to North Central monthly. Let me say that again. We cover everything in the city residentially. If a customer leaves their water bill hanging, we cover it. If somebody doesn't pay their bill on time, we cover it. If whatever happens with somebody's account here in the city of Espanola, we guarantee North Central the full amount of their bill to be paid in its entirety, monthly, no matter what. So we're an entity that has, has been faithful to the commitment from the get-go. The issue is, is that within the county, you have ten thousand accounts. There's a percentage of those accounts that have not been paid for a long time. And that issue, for my purposes, deals with part of the reason that we haven't had the maintenance that you're talking about, part of the reason that there hasn't been trucks replaced, part of the reason that the poor staff has been overtaxed. There's a lot going on here. It's, there's a lot going on here. It's not just easy to say, oh, that's the responsible person. But at the end of the day, the city of Espanola has been faithful to the bill. We've done our part. And the way that it is now is the trash has just become an issue, not only within the city confines. If you look around our community, the trash is everywhere. And it's a problem. And give North Central credit for this. They continue to be committed to even non-paid customers. And the reason is, is because they do not want trash all over the place. So they continue to pick... So they continue to pick up people that have not paid. And, and notice, I'm a business person. If I didn't have my customers pay me, I could not be in business. That's the nature of it. So the issue deals with, first of all, not having trucks that worked, not having enough. She re- she fixed that. I give Johnny a lot of credit.
So, Mayor Protem pointed where, let, let's limit, let's limit debate regarding the actual entity?
But the only issue is that right now, it's a staffing issue at this point. She does not have drivers. She's had retired people, she's lost people. She does not have the staff necessary to do all the side loads. That's the reason the city's doing it.
Call for the question. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor Protem, in favor. Counselors Dennis Tim Salasad.
For the motion.
Manuel J. Martinez.
Uh, for the motion, but can we have like a timeframe for them to answer us? On that letter? So the JP isn't clear on a timeframe in terms of response time? That's one of the issues too. There's no technically oversight for this entity. Um, I think it's reasonable to fix the timeline, but ultimately, I want everyone in this room to know and understand that there's no one holding them to the fire. Also wanna reiterate, there's a five-member board. The county, for instance, has two members. Uh, okay, Wega has a member, uh, Santa Claro has a member, and the City of Espanola has one to vote. Um, there's no oversight. We're gonna ask for that, but next agenda item is gonna be regarding our future and how we handle it for us and for our people here in the City of Espanola, 'cause that's our commitment. Continue, Ms. Garcia.
Denise D. Benavides, in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you, members of the governing body. Uh, Mr. Rennick and Mr. Yatzie, please, let's get that out like tomorrow.
We'll definitely get that out tomorrow. We will send it by via email and certified mail.
Thank you. We know in discussion of possible action regarding an alternative for solid waste collection within the City of Espanola, Mr. Yatzie.
Uh, yes, Mayor. What I'm looking for is permission to start looking at. Plan A would be that we can work and get North Central Solid Waste Authority fixed. But the present issue of this and the importance of this in the community, I think we need to look at plans B, C, and D. And so it's permission from y'all to start looking at alternatives and bringing y'all some alternatives, hopefully at the meeting next Tuesday.
So
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Protem P. Su Martinez, second by Counselor Dennis Tim Salasad. Discussion.
Another discussion, uh,
Mayor Protem.
Could we have an idea of what possible?
Yeah, Mr. Yatzie, I know. Mr. Yatzie has been with us five weeks, ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, he seems to attract issues with sanitation wherever he goes. So he's, he's very experienced already, uh, he's already run numbers. I think on week two, we were having problems with the trash and I had started talking to him and says, I'm looking at it right now already, week two. And so I think he's gotten a lot done now, week five.
Option, one option would be to bring it back in-house. Um, the other option would be that the city would have to write an RFP. We'd have to put out for an RFP for bids to see are, are there any other private companies out there that would be willing to do the trash service in our community? Um, on the, bring it in-house. Hopefully by next Tuesday, I can actually bring y'all a performer to show you what our cost benefit ratio will be on it. And if that is not to Counsel's liking, and then I'll work with the, uh, city attorney and we will actually look at writing an RFP so that if we can get this resolved with North Central, we can immediately put the RFP out for bids.
Can we have that performed on next Tuesday's, uh, City Council Agenda, please?
Yes.
So we, we can have it or have it by Tuesday?
Okay.
Mr. R- uh, Counsel Martinez.
Thank you. On, uh, working with, uh, North Central, can we have an audit, uh, to know that they are billing us correctly? Uh, the reason I bring that up is because in many instances, with, uh, my line of work, I have to write letters for people to show North Central that the property that they have is a vacant piece of property 'cause they're still being charged for trash even though no one resides there or it's a piece of property that's used for, uh, planting or for trees. And, and yet they're still getting billed for North Central. I'm not sure how many people within the city that's happening to, but I know that it's happened outside the city limits. So this is what I understand, we're actually being billed for what they're actually picking up.
Yes, we can do an audit. I can't have it to you by next Tuesday, but we will work on getting that done.
Any other suspicion from the council? Counselor Dennis Tim Salasad.
Thank you, Mayor, um. Just to state it for members of the audience, specifically couns- uh, former counselor, Alfred Edeta. Um, Mr. Edeta was the city councilor from two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, if I'm correct. Mr. Edeta was, uh, the city representative for the North Central Solid Waste Authority. He's very well versed. He knows, you know, a lot of things inside and out from back then. And I know, uh, since then, you know, from the outside, he has been keeping up with, uh, with issues as well regarding that and, and several other issues. So, uh, not just Mr. Edeta, but other members from the community. There, we could possibly look at anybody that wants to come forward and volunteer their services, their expertise in reference to this. I think that would be something great to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Rennick.
If I could respond to Counselor Martinez briefly about the issue you just raised on county residents being billed for vacant land or unoccupied houses. We don't have a copy of the county agreement with the authority. The JPA does not address it. So we don't know whether the authority is billing the residents or whether the county is billing them. Here in the city, it's the city that bills. So if people are being billed in the county, it would be necessary to determine who's doing the billing.
I'll clarify that and tell you that Crossville does the billing for Rio Rico.
I did not hear that.
North Central is the biller and the collector for Rio Rico County.
Well, there's, there's a distinction then between the, how the two entities are being treated.
Yes, sir.
No further discussion before the body. Mr. Yatzie, did you have any last comments? I, I know we've been talking to, uh, we also support them with the support of the transfer station as well, not just billing. Um, so these are all discussions and such. We've invested quite a significant amount of, I think roughly one point three million dollars.
Roughly one point three million. We pay them a hundred thousand dollars a year plus monthly money collected from the residents. So, and then our commercial accounts alone bring in about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a month into North Central Solid Waste Authority.
Uh, with no further business before this body, the motion was made by Mayor Protem P. Su Martinez, second by Counselor Dennis Tim Salasad. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem P. Su Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Dennis Tim Salasad.
For the motion.
Manuel J. Martinez.
For the motion.
Denise D. Benavides.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I wanna thank you all for joining us this evening. Um, please continue to stay posted. Uh, for the listening audience, this meeting with broadcast tonight on KDC. Thank you to our city staff, water, sewer, streets, and if you're going above and beyond. Uh, please continue to keep your polycart at the curbside. Throughout this time, we're hoping to get trash collected on each of our streets and we will get you hopefully as soon as possible. Thank you for your patience. Have a good evening, everyone.